Follow me in order, welcome. And start off, Trustee Shaw, if any of you have occasion to come in class.
You're welcome. General Father, thank you for this lovely day and the reason we are here, which is to administer these college, our guidance as we do that and maybe help us make the right decisions. In the name of the prayer, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The approval of the agenda.
I'm going to approve the agenda that presents this, as you may call it.
Excellent.
I'd like to thank the Trustee Richard Beecher-Barr here. All of them, favor.
Aye, aye.
Approval of the minutes. Changes or fixes there? Any motions?
Making motion to approve and has presented.
Second.
I'll say it.
All of them, favor. Are guaranteed second with this goal on the trigger today, you guys are gonna have to jump in. Consideration of the college financial report, Charlotte.
Start on page nine of your board book, we'll look at our April numbers, April twenty twenty four compared to April twenty twenty three. And you can see, very similar to what you've seen in months previous, that first page looking at our revenue, we're tracking generally ahead of our revenue from last year, with the notable exception in front of the state grants. You'll remember, we've mentioned before, that last or previous year, they included some rather large grants that ended. So, then on the next page, looking at your expenses, again, very similar to the previous months, we're trending a little ahead in salaries and benefits, reflecting increase in pay rates, and then with some, a little bit of savings in our operating expenses. And then finally, on page eleven, you see the revenues minus expenses, quite a bit behind where we were last year, but that's largely attributable to those grants that I mentioned that ended, at the end of last fiscal year. So, factoring those out, we're pretty comfortable. Following that, then the next two pages are just the detailed numbers for those graphs. And then if you want to turn to page fourteen, we'll look at our preliminary today numbers, budget to actual comparison. And you can see that we're doing very well on our tuition and fees, got a little bit of summer left to capture that last little bit, but we're nearly at the finish line on our budgeted tuition and fees, and a number of other categories as well. One, you'll see the other operating revenue, looks like it's quite a bit behind, that's actually because we had budgeted the insurance proceeds for the flood that we had at the best activity centers, that's not going to be utilized this year, so that's also reflected as savings on the expense side as well. So, looking at the bottom half of the graph, and using ninety-two, this is ninety-two percent in our fiscal years, we're using this graph, you can see, most, all of those categories are out of the low. That category, notably looking at the operation of the Ainsley Plant, is again where the expense side of that same thing for the best activity center is, so we'll have that savings to offset that by the break as well, so not a cause of concern, that's just a tiny difference. And then the next few pages there, again, are just the detailed numbers. Page sixteen is your capital budget, nothing really huge new there, payments improvements, including that, you know, we've finished now the HVAC project and the drainage project over by, over by the Lava Complex, and then some roof projects and so forth that we've completed this fiscal year. The only thing that we have currently going on is the addition to the Lava Family Sports Complex, and I'm not sure whether, Dr. Payne, do you know if we've handed that over to our internal plant folks to, to comment, or not?
Not yet.
And we're close to doing that, so we're not, not quite there yet, so we really haven't seen a whole lot of expenses yet on that. And then following that, we look at our cash position, on page eighteen is our pie graph, that you can see, we do have a little bit of extra strategic reserves this time of the year, that those funds on hand will dwindle a bit as we, as we operate until we will finally get some fall financial, April, January, that's cash influx. Following that, then, so look at our certificates of deposit, we did, we did have a CD with People's Community Bank, this, this is just college funds that we invested, we were able to get a, a higher interest rate than what we get in our checking account, so we did invest that, and we knew that this month at a five, like five, seven percent interest rate, so that is through August. And then the next page just shows you how we arrived at that, we renewed that in the CD at the five, on the five, seven percent. And then on page twenty-two, on our bid report, we did bid the banking services out, statute gives us the authority to do four years at a time, so we have reached the end of that four years, we had to bid that out, we have two bids submitted, and you'll see on page twenty-three, our recommendation is to accept the bid from Southern Bank, who's our current bank provider as well. We did bid it with two different options, one includes continuing with the bank branch that's currently located in the best activity center, the other option is to close, a lot of banks will close the bank branch, and the ATM would still remain, and that would allow us to utilize that space for other things as we go into remodeling Best Activity Center as a result of the flood that we had, and the insurance proceeds we're still sitting on, and so we get a little bit better interest rate if we allow them to close that bank branch, because that per se is in some operating costs, so that is the option that we're recommending to close the bank branch, and that would get us, currently, it's a point four percent below the T bill rate annually, with a four, one percent, and a ceiling of five percent. So, right now, I think that works out to just on the five percent at the current T bill rates that we would get our checking account in that scenario. Currently, we're getting half a percent.
Is non-campus friends, we use nuts?
Yeah, we, the college itself is the primary customer, doesn't get very much of a track of that.
But they can still use the ATM for probably not everything they're working?
Yes. So, that, that would just have college personnel, they need to bank rather than, than we. That's it of our court, any questions?
Net tuition and fees gonna come out pretty close to your end to what you projected?
Yes. Yeah, like I said, these are main numbers, so we have just a little bit of summer left in that, to reach that.
I'm going to approve the financial report, that's present. I'll second that.
All of them, favor.
Aye, aye.
President.
Thank you, Mr. Care. So, first I'm gonna ask Brad Telemeyer to come forward with our guest. We are proud and welcome part of our legislative caucus here today.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know, my name is Brad Telemeyer. I'm a little bit familiar to some of you, I was the director of development here at the college for a brief time in two thousand fifteen, when I'm in a public life, and then the pool of the legislature was too much, and I went back to, I had to legislate directly for the State Traffic Association. Last summer, I left the troopers association, started my consulting firm. The first person I called when I started my consulting firm was Dr. Payne, and said, look, if I can assist the college in any way, with lobbying efforts or consulting, please let me know, my wish in the college, that no tears remain during the golf tournaments and justice, came very near to my heart, I said, well, let me think about it, we'll see. So, I had a very close session, he came to me and said, you've got a president who's in the world, so we need to go out there to let me worry, some dorms, so perfect, so first thing I wanted to do was pull in our local legislators, which is Senator Brown, Congressman Cameron Parker, and Senator Jason Bean, and Senator Harley Millington, we sat down and came up with a plan to get this through the House and then through the Senate, through the budget process. I think we were very successful in getting it through the House, through their efforts and working with the chairman of the budget committee, Cody Smith, Kobe added ten million dollars in the workforce, which quite often was a little unexpected, we were hoping that Cody would just be receptive to whatever the Senate might put in. So, through their efforts, Cody put the money in, went to the Senate, Senator Lincoln Huff, through Jason Bean's efforts in the Senate, put an additional five million in there. Well, I'm sure as you're all aware, the last couple weeks of session in the Senate became an absolutely dysfunctional mess, and we were very close to not getting the budget done. And in that regard, the budget didn't do a huge process in the last week, and in that process, the five million dollars that the Senate put in was, was taken out, and we even left with the original ten million at the Senate, at the hospital, which is disappointing that we didn't get it in fifteen, but very, very much appreciate the ten million. And going forward, in the next session, we plan our, we're showing him getting another ten. But I just want to recognize their efforts today, and we could not have done this without them, it was a complete team effort, and they, they saw the need for this, for being part of the community and part of the area, and I'd like to thank both of them, and say a few things, and, uh, please come on up, I hope it, I give them round of applause.
So, I'm Cameron Parker, I'm a business partner, but I have spent a lot of time here at TRC the last two years, my son Raj was over here in twenty thirteen, so he, he played his AA here, so he played baseball here, I was on campus a lot, I, I'm very impressed with the dorms here, my daughter works in Missouri, talking with them here, and we have great dorms, so we need, so hey, we need some more money, absolutely, Three Rivers is a great, it is, it's a passive, it's a gem in southeast Missouri, and sometimes it goes unnoticed, I think, and so, you know, anything that we can do going forward to help monetarily, or, or anything that needs to be done, Charlie had a great experience here, and thank you all for that, because it's fun enough for momma to come and see himself on the way, so he felt like he was going, but just, if there's anything that I can do with you, please reach out, we'd love to help.
Over to your objective camera, also here to build, uh, system of community college.
Right, to try, it was core curriculum, raise that from the core forty-two to four sixty, so that your four years would take a few more of our hours, because I know we're, as parents, as students, who are spending a lot of money on their, on their core sixty hours, and sometimes the four years are not taking those, so, that didn't get through to ER by the end of next year as well.
I agree with everything that Cameron said. I spent some time here thirty years ago at June Fest basketball, people believe it or not, so several summers, but Three Rivers is great, they do so much for our area, and when we talk to Dr. Payne about the dormitories, you know, seventy miles from Dunbar, where I live, that's a long commute every day, and back and forth, so, the dorms, I think, will be a great asset, also the facility at Sykesville is doing some amazing things, I had to tour that last year, and we put that in our economic development efforts now on our way, so, thank you all for what you're doing, we, we have learned that as a group, we get more things done, so, it doesn't matter that you all aren't in Biden district, or, you said it, Hardee's, worse than I think, but very strong, we're all working together with, I expect Sanders and Rips, and I think it's paying some dividends, and so, I think it's a brand of a way to, thank you all.
But Representative Brown's also sits on the budget thing, and a very important spot to be able to help, you know, when those issues are coming up on that, so we thank him for, they're both going to be in, going into their, yes, their, so, we're getting that point where they've done great things, and now the younger folks are coming in, get elected, they're looking up at the, these folks, so, they're in prior positions to, to make important decisions, so, again, thank them for, and Senator Bean and his chief of staff are running behind, so they might be popping in at some point, they're, they might just pop in and say hello, so, if anyone had any questions, or, or anything like that?
I want to say thank you, the, the result that your guys' work has, it's, it's absolutely incredible. So, what you guys have done is a game changer for how we can serve people that are a little bit further away from us, gives us a lot of space where we can add some things, we can really do some innovative programming to help those, those guys and gals that, that really need it, that wouldn't be able to access it in a easy way, you know, you nailed it right on the head when you said, you know, you can't commute that every day, and everybody does not have broadband access, so online is not necessarily an option, and that's not always the best option for a student. So, being able to come here and with the help of state funding, keeping it affordable, vital to our future and our community's future, so, I greatly appreciate your commitment on this, and your dedication was just outstanding and incredible, can't, can't say enough thanks to you, really appreciate it.
We're gonna back you.
Yes, I appreciate it.
One thing I would say, simple, but it committed, that puts you all, you stand out in community colleges, because most of the colleges are coming and saying, hey, we need this to fix this building, fix that, you all are taking care of your stuff. Exactly, you are taking care of your maintenance, and so, when we make this ask, they're like, they're not asking for fixing what they got, no, they don't, so it made it easier to make this ask because of the work that I'm doing with you, so, so, thank you all for that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good work.
That's what I also, thank you all for letting me continue to be a part of this partnership, and I value this, and, you know, working with colleges, I'm very near to my heart, and I hope it's so ever loved, and I look forward to continuing, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, right. And now I'm gonna ask Ms. Laura McElroy if she will come forward and talk to us about our most recent fine penny.
Being with points, I'll go back to December, December, we graduated fourteen RNs, fourteen which passed the influx on the first time, and then May, we graduated thirty-nine, and there's still testing, we're super excited about that, but then went, went kind of off without a hitch, and all the students were super excited to get that done, so, the process is a big success.
It's a fantastic success, this year was the first year where all nurse graduates at all levels had a hundred percent first time pass rate on their life insurance exam, so it has been a banner year for nursing, so, thank you. Oh, please.
The OPNs in December graduated thirty-nine, of which, like Dr. Payne just said, all very high on the last thing, passed on the first time, and we're super excited to have them join the workforce.
How are the bus tents?
Still, hundred percent, we're still, they're still filling spots, and they're still plenty of need for nursing. You could ask probably daily, why are community employers, when do you use up your new graduates, or, when can I talk to your students that are in the programs, whether they can get hired, before they even leave the program, so.
Anyone that's wanting to work with working. Any other questions? All right, and then following that, on page seventeen, we have commencement, we have two hundred and sixty-eight students participate, we awarded over eight hundred degrees and certificates to over five hundred individuals. Big night went off without a hitch, I cannot say enough about our faculty and staff that worked to bring this event off, it, it really goes very smoothly, is very student focused, and we get greater feedback from our students about their experience for commencement. Now I'm going to ask that Ms. Tanny, Tanny, come in here, come forward and talk to us about our EMS week, so, Roger.
We have our EMS week on campus this year, we were between the EMS and the firehouse, I'm in Chris Building, we had multiple area agencies there to visit with us, and a lot of kids, we had things set up for the kids to make cards for, whether it be fire, or whether it be police, or whether it be EMS, and then we distributed those to the area stations, and I wish I had found how many people was there, it was probably one of our biggest events so far, we've done this for three years in a row now, and there was a lot of people in and out for a couple of hours there, and we did have different things set up where we had purchased new mannequins a couple of years ago, so they had to go by and see everything that we had, they had to tour both areas, fleet, or fire and EMS, and had a really good time just visiting with everybody, we gave away two awards, we gave away a pre-center of the year for pre-hospital, and that went to a paramedic with Butler County EMS, Kyle Baker, and we gave away a hospital pre-center award to the Papa Plus Regional ER, Haley Durham, and we did that to show our appreciation of their dedication to our students precepting out in the fields for us. Again, we beg off what nursing has done, our medical, that's right, this is, first time, that is.
Great job, any questions? Thank you, Karen. So, yeah. Uh, summer session is off and running, we began June third, it's all been held steady as compared to the last summer, so things are going smoothly, and we are moving forward. And now I'm going to ask that Ms. Randy Brooks come forward and talk about Project Pride along with Ms. Helen Payne.
Great, thank you. Just to kind of let you know, end up days for Project Pride, it's concerned, we're in our second year of three-year grant, it is with the Royal Post-Secondary Education, that's a federally funded grant, so just kind of give you a few numbers of the number of students, or a few figures here, of the number of students we've been able to serve with this particular grant, so the preview day was held every September, this last preview day, we had about four hundred students that were in attendance, we've seen over a thousand students at high school visits in all of our area high schools, over ten thousand students within our college fairs, career fairs, and events, we did host, and this was specifically for our summer boot camps, we hosted welding and construction day at our Dexter location, we had forty-four students that were in attendance, and they actually got to, to, what do you name, like Kurt Nader, so they actually got to go in on like the construction side, and like cut their boards, and sand them, and stain them, and then on the welding side, they got to cut their rebar, and bend it, and weld it together, and this room of the board, so they had a little bit of hands-on of what actually worked, right? And, and same thing for high students, so, you know, there's that side, so, but that's one part of it, and then, of course, our whole goal with Project Pride is to get our students here physically on our campus, through preview day, and with our regular league tour program, so we actually have hosted a hundred and fifty-eight students this past four years, just on the campus tour side, which is an increase over the last several years, we took a little bit of a hit of wars with, with COVID, and we're rebuilding all of those avenues for students to come into this. So, what we do every summer is we have some of all of these visits and trips and things like that that we're doing with our students, with our summer boot camp program, so this summer, we're actually offering a commercial driver's license, we did this last summer as well, this has been a very, very, very expensive program for our students, and they grant one hundred percent fund this, it's about six thousand dollars if they were to go out right and pay for this, and we one hundred percent fund this for our students. So, we have ten students right now that are doing C D L, we have another session that actually starts on July eighth, and we do have seven students right now committed to completing the program in July, we also this year have CNA and phlebotomy, the family program for us, we have five students right now that are going through that, construction, we have five students, and welding, we have three students, for the most part, with the exception of C D L, these are eight-week programs, they do have to give up their summer, it's eight weeks, all day, every day, four days a week, and when I say all day, every day, I mean like seven to four, so they are very labor-intensive, but they walk away certified and ready for employment, so we are thrilled that we have the opportunity to do this, we're hoping that we get the opportunity to rewrite this grant year in this next year, so bear with us, we are hoping that we receive the information soon, so we can get in that process and continue to serve our students. Do you all have any questions for us?
Who's the C D L, what we're hoping to?
So, it's for newly high school graduates, so the Project Pride program is for like twenty-four graduates, so like they will be either graduating in December or May, if you ever participate in the summer.
So, it's part of a totally different group from what we have in the past?
Yes. Because you're trying to get our high school students that maybe don't want to go to college for say, for accredited classes, to get them out, give them some training, take them into the workforce, and then, okay, I did this, maybe I'll go back there and finish out a degree. Anything else? Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, and then, I wanted to speak a little bit about Mental Health Conference, this is our third annual mental health conference, to be posted here, who you see there is Mr. Corbin Reynolds, our program director for behavioral health, and Gabe Tinsley, our university center director there, integral in putting this on, Senator Mathis was there, and our main sponsors and partners on this are Sino Behavioral Health and S V C, we, in partnership with them, get together, bring in speakers, we had three speakers this year, including our very own retired Dr. Murray Ryan Anderson, and it was the largest mental health conference that we have held here to date, so a lot of community participation, a lot of people served, and one of the ways that our behavioral health program partners with our community and serves our community, so, very glad that we're able to do this. And now for two upcoming events, this Friday is the eleventh Annual Three Rivers Endowment Press Golf Tournament, fundraising for student operational support and scholarships, so starts kickoff at twelve P M. at Westwood Hills Country Club, and then our thirty-second Annual Children's Drama Camp, headed up by Ms. Joelle Seifer, we're doing two this year, July fifteenth through the nineteenth, and July twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, they are filling up fast, so, if you have a child that you'd like to participate in drama camp this year, be sure and reach out and get your tickets, just seventy-five dollars per child, and registration is due no later than July eighth, and that, Mr. Chair, is present as for, and we do have executive session. I'll entertain motion for executive session. All right. Motion, right?
Second.
Second, was it, or, roll call?
Justy Patterson?
Yes.
Justy Harrison?
Yeah.
Justy Shaw?
All right.
Justy Williams?
All right, we're gonna take it. Items for consideration, discussion, and vote. Any, any things you need to? So, item one is the FY twenty-five budget, I'm gonna ask Ms. Charlotte, you both come to the table and present that for us.
Correct. So, if you want to turn, let's see, it's page thirty-three, we're looking at revenue of twenty-eight million, one hundred and twenty-four. Uh, we're looking at revenue of twenty-eight million, one hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars. Plus another one hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars of reserves. First, these are for small projects. Gives us a total budget of twenty-eight million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and eleven. On the next page, you see that breakdown of revenue. This does include, um, pretty much level enrollment levels. Um, it does include, uh, tuition increase. That was pre, pre-planned according to the multi-year tuition plan that we had. So that was a dollar on base tuition, both industry and, and out of district plus two dollars on the common fee. Um, the resource fee remained the same, so no increase to that. And it also includes an increase to state appropriations. Um, per the state legislature of about two hundred and five thousand dollars in extra this year or last year. So that's all good news. Um, on the next page, then looking at our expenses. Uh, look at that as natural class. Uh, we are looking at increase to salaries and benefits. First by the increase in the insurance premiums that college pays for employees of five point three percent. And then second, increase to wages of the greater four percent or eighty-five cents per hour, which works out to one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars a year. Then the next page is those same expenses, but broken up, uh, by department. Very similar to a year's past, construction is just under thirty percent, um, being our largest category, as you would expect. Institutional support, we talk about that every month, including, it includes a lot of big overarching overhead, um, kind of ones. So that's always a big category as well. Um, next page, year to year, again, very similar, you see the increase in salaries and benefits by far the largest piece of our budget, as you would expect in the service business. Um, and so that increase from year to year is reflected of those increased wages. And then you have, next you have your capital budget. So the capital budget is thirteen million, twenty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. That's funded by a combination of the ten million dollar state of recreation for the dorm that you heard about earlier. Uh, a million dollar insurance, uh, claim proceeds for the best activity center that's left over from, uh, we have the flood from, uh, ICE and then, uh, two million of reserve funds. And then the next page gives you the details of all those projects, uh, campus projects is, uh, improvements to restrooms. We've got windows and west over, uh, that Live Family Sports Complex is a lead over from this fiscal year. Uh, where you had, um, that addition in the back as well as some work on some parking there. Uh, renovation for baseball clubhouse is another, um, carryover from previous years. That's a project we just kind of gotten to yet. Best activity center again is that, those insured proceeds. The twenty-five oh nine three version boulevard is the building that was formerly the license bureau. Um, so that's just if we get a rent or if any modifications. So that's kind of just in case. Uh, student housing then of course, at that ten million, ten million of that number is that, uh, construction of the, of a new dorm and then the remainder of that, our improvements to our existing building. Um, and then just some smaller, uh, projects there with, uh, what used to be the nine eleven dispatch building, what we're now calling the public safety building. Just if we need some remodeling changes there as we kind of shift people around campus and then investments in our college vehicles is to keep our figure up to date. And then the Dexter location is actually our final payment to purchase that building. So that would happen in January of twenty twenty-five. That four hundred and five thousand dollars.
Charlotte, how did our, uh, our estimates from last year on our credit hours work out? I know, did you guys budget flat last year or it seemed like there was a decrease in credit hours?
We were, we budgeted pretty flat and what we found, uh, with actuals is overall that still held true. We had a little bit of changes in the mix. So you know how, you know, all credit hours are not worth the same amount because we have different rates. So we did see some change in mix. Um, but, but in totality, they all kind of offset each other pretty well. Um, we had one semester that was a little below. We had one semester with a little above. So they, those kind of offset each other. So in totality, we came out pretty well.
And we have lengthy conversations in budget development about where are we going to set track out, right? Uh, it has been forever ago since we budgeted that they were going to be up. And it's only within the last three years that we started budgeting flat. Uh, and this year was even more because of, followed good spring, took a very unexpected and unexplained dip. And that brought us a lot of discomfort when it came time to predict. Uh, but in the end we came down to, okay, we're going to go flat. That then gave us a revenue and expense picture that looked like we could do a two percent roughly forty cent raise. Um, then late in the balancing process, um, Charlotte and Jason and I sat down and went, okay, well, we've balanced this out. And now we have a surplus and they came back and said, we want to look at the raises again. Uh, of whether or not they're two percent, we want to go back to the original four percent that we proposed. Um, about two days worth of intense conversation about that. And we switched and went back to four percent, which resulted in the budget that you see here.
And four percent is what we did going into this fiscal year too. So that made it kind of.
Oh, right. You guys got anything discussing? Do you have more presentation?
No.
Okay.
No, there's no questions.
She had a big pause there. So I was assuming she was ready to field questions.
I thought so too, but I wanted to make sure. But I'm guessing you probably got enough.
You don't, you don't want to do a line by?
Well, I could. There's, there's the details there.
All right, we got a motion. And the second, roll call vote.
Trusty Featherstone?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Hager?
Can I vote since I was not here?
Trusty Garrison?
He did. You can.
I can. I, I've read all one thousand, two hundred and ninety pages of the budget and I will vote yes.
Do you need us to start over today?
You what?
You need us to start over today tomorrow?
It can't lie. I would, I would like to hear.
No, he meant in total, not just the budget.
Eric made the motion, Garrett said. You already did though.
No, I said, all right, yeah.
All right, he called your name.
Trusty Featherstone?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Hager?
Yes.
Trusty Garrison?
Again, yes.
Trusty Shock?
All right.
Thank you, Trusty.
True, I abstain.
Hey, hey, move on.
Mark, do the look.
All right, uh, let's see. Consideration approval of all personnel, actions and associated.
I would like to make the motion to approve all personnel and associate and all, and verbatim, all the documents associated with.
Thanks for that butchered motion. We might like to second that, Matt.
I'll find it.
Okay, uh, roll call.
Trusty Featherstone?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Hager?
Yes.
Trusty Harrison?
Yes.
Trusty Shock?
All right.
I don't have, it doesn't say that I called for a motion to adjourn. So I guess we're just stuck.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Kind of like second that, voice vote, all approved.
All right.
All the favor.